Yeah, yeah, yes, agreed. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, are we ready? Okay. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good evening. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting of the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee to order on Thursday, October 6, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And I will begin by inviting you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to their Father, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start things off with, I'll just let you all know that this meeting is being recorded, and it is also being livestreamed on HW Cam. We also have a Zoom link available for public comment, as well as we welcome public comment here in the room. And, I think I said everything. If you'd like to wish public comment, if you'd like to offer public comment, what I'd like you to do is share your full name and spell your last name so that we can get it right for the minutes. I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. I've asked Amy today to be our timer. She'll let you know when you've got about 30 seconds left. And please remember that Citizens' Comments is the time, it's a time and opportunity for you to share your views and for us to listen. So it's our, your opportunity to be heard. It's not a dialogue, but it is an opportunity for us to hear what you have to say. We really are grateful for anyone who is willing to do that, either in our Citizens' Comments or in, by contacting us through email. We appreciate that as well. All right, so if there's, I'm gonna start with anyone in the room. If there's anyone in the room who would like to offer public comment, I'll ask you to please approach the podium. Sure, step right up. And let's just make sure the podium mic is working. If you could just start off with your name and spelling your name, please.
Hi, Sue Cook, C-O-O-K-E, for Puritan Road in Wentham. Good evening, committee members and Superintendent Tracy. I do appreciate your responses to my communication today. I had two topics that I was looking for further clarification on. One was about our rebranding, but due to the three minutes, I'm gonna focus on my other topic, which was diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that are interwoven into the school curriculum, particularly at the high school. For those that didn't read my email sent earlier today, I shared a book talk, or I won't call it a book talk, I'm sorry. It was a class discussion or a class that took place in ninth grade English class last week. This book was used as part of a unit the students are working on called Coming of Age or Identity. The teacher printed out a handout, which was a segment of a book called, "This Book is Anti-Racist." The cover of the book tells students they can wake up and take action, do the work. The teacher presented this segment in Google Classroom and read it out loud to the class. Afterward, students were encouraged to write on a piece of paper things that represent their identity. For example, the teacher presented that she was a cisgender female and then shared other things that she feels represented her identity. Here's a piece of the passage that was shared with the students. Students read that they decide which identity they will share with the world. They get to choose how to name their identities. And in a bold text box, 14- to 15-year-old students read that many others will try to get you to fit into an imaginary box. This box includes what we call the dominant culture. If you are white, upper-middle-class, cisgender, male, educated, athletic, neurotypical, and/or able-bodied, you're in this box. Students read in class that if they don't fit in this box, they're considered to be a part of what's called the subordinate culture. Includes black, brown, indigenous people of color of the global majority, queer, transgender, non-binary folks, and cisgender women, youth, Muslim, Jewish, Buddhist, et cetera. There are many more who exist outside of this imaginary box than those that fit inside of it, et cetera. Somehow, it's okay to invite 14- to 15-year-old adolescents to choose one of these profiles from this passage to represent themselves. Do you feel that this passage brings students together? My interpretation is that this language invokes anxiety and potential agitation, and frankly places me in a box described by the writer. I ask our community and committee members, are you ready for this to be served to your student? These are the direct results of the work that's being done by this committee.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think there is. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to offer comment? Okay. Mr. Tracy, is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to offer comment?
I do have someone on Zoom who's raising their hands. Let me get the video on.
Great.
Hi, Rosie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, you are all set.
Thank you. I don't have a personal comment, but I did tune in to hear the public comment, and I just wanted to make a comment that I couldn't understand anything that the speaker said. So I don't know if in the future you could try to work on that so that we'd be able to hear it. It just was unintelligible.
Okay. Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you, Rosie, I'm so sorry to hear that. Rosie, just for the record, can you please state your name and address so that we have that?
Sure. Okay, sorry about that. Rosie Kennedy, 61 Rust in Hamilton.
Thank you. I'm not, I, I did normally say we don't respond, but because it's a technical issue, I am gonna respond. I, I do hope that you and possibly all the others in the recording will be able to hear it when it replays on HW Cam. Typically, it is usually easier to hear, and I am so sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosie.
Okay. Mr. Tracy, is there anyone else on Zoom?
There is not.
Okay. At this point, I'll have you shut them down, and they can continue to watch on HW Cam if they would like to.
Okay, we're closing the video link, and if you would like to continue to watch, I can go onto HW Cam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, this is something that is, for those of you that have been paying attention, we did vote and approve a mission statement. And I have asked Anna, the vice chair, to read that mission statement. I promise we won't read it every single time, but I feel strongly Mr. Tracy made us a beautiful poster to have it there, and I'm gonna ask Anna to read it.
Sure. Did you wanna do the protocols or this is?
Oh, I, yes, in my mind, I skipped it, but we can, is it, are we skipping it? No, we'll do it out of order, if that's okay. Is that, that's okay with the committee?
I just wanna make sure. All right. The 2022-2023 School Committee Mission Statement. The Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee will lead and inspire a district that attracts and retains high-quality educators by acknowledging and respecting their expertise and professionalism; that empowers administrators to seek innovation, responsiveness, and creativity in all aspects of different district operations; that supports and guides the superintendent to execute and achieve the approved 2022-2023 district goals; that inspires all students to realize their fullest potential and feel a powerful sense of individual and collective belonging; and that is a source of civic pride and municipal engagement to serve the community for generations to come.
Thank you. And I hope the committee will feel free to gesture towards the poster at any point throughout the year. I did, I actually did skip the, our regular review of School Committee protocols. It's my turn to do that, so I'm gonna go ahead and read. As elected members of the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Number four. School committee members will channel requests for information, reports, and data through the superintendent and the school committee chair rather than to staff. The superintendent will ensure that each member of the committee has equal access to this information in a timely manner. Recognizing the importance of proactive communication and avoiding surprises, school committee members will, whenever possible, contact the school committee chair and/or the superintendent in advance of a meeting if they have questions or concerns about an agenda item, or will ask the chair at least 48 hours prior to a meeting that an item be placed on an agenda. Thank you. I hope you all appreciate that I took a long one.
That was a long one. I may land out the record.
Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to hold from the consent agenda? Nope, nope. Okay, Amy, do you have a motion?
I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee approve the consent agenda as listed in the, in the meeting agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik. All those in favor? Right, that was four in favor, and the motion passes. It is unanimous of the four members present. Okay. Next up, we have, Mr. Tracy, are you gonna introduce the school improvement plan?
I will. This is the annual school improvement plan presentation. We have all five of our principals here this evening, and they'll follow the usual order. We'll start with the elementary principals. They have always shared goals. This year, we broke away from that a little bit. They have a couple of shared goals and then one individual building goal. They have also worked with, the principals have also worked kind of alongside the work that we did to the district goals, so that you'll see alignment, direct alignment there with each of the goals. And then the school improvement plans have all been approved by school councils at the school level. So it's important to note, that's a, that's a big piece of the requirement of school improvement planning process, that your school councils approve your school improvement plan. So without further ado, I'll call up the elementary principals, Mr. Schersten, Ms. Schneider, Ms. Chediac. It's all about shh with the elementary team.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Juliana Schneider, and it's a pleasure to be here and to join Hamilton-Wentham Regional School District. So thank you for having all of us here this evening. Together, we are presenting our first two goals, and then we have individual goals for our third goals. And our first goal is connected to the district goal 2.8, which is around strengthening our MTSS systems across all of the three elementary schools while targeting our learning outcomes at the elementary level. And so our goal for that is around the implementation of our CKLA, which is Common Knowledge Language Arts Curriculum, which is a very large initiative in order to enhance our Tier One instruction or our universal instruction in classrooms for all children to access. In addition to that, we're spending time this year reviewing our current math curriculum for the purpose of refining that potentially and making a plan for moving forward. And Carolyn will speak to our steps for that goal.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Chediac. I am the principal at the Winthrop School, and I will speak to the action steps to go with our Goal One. Our first action step is to identify a common math screener that we will use consistently across the elementary schools. We also will administer our benchmark assessments three times a year, both in math and in ELA. And in math, we will use the identified math screener, and we will be using the DIBELS for all students. And then we will be using the PAST, which is a phonemic awareness screener, and the QPI, which is a phonics screener for identified students who need some more investigation. We will have data meetings three times a year. Our first round begins in two weeks, and at that data meetings, we will be identifying Tier One instructional strategies that we need to refine based on the data, as well as identifying students who might need Tier Two and Tier Three interventions and what those interventions might be. Part of our, the fourth action step is communication with families regarding the changes in literacy instruction. So one of the drivers for this is a parent letter that goes home at the beginning of each new unit in the CKLA curriculum to inform families what the new unit will be about. In the K-2 grades, their CKLA is divided into two parts. The first part is a skills part, and then the second part is a knowledge development part. So there will be parent letters going home for both of those units. And then in grades three to five, it's all knowledge-based with all of the skills embedded in the knowledge units.
Our second goal is a DEIB goal that's connected to the district goal there as well. Thinking about meeting the evolving and varied needs of all of our students and school community members in a manner that respects and values each individual. The pieces that we're focusing on there are recognizing, acknowledging, and celebrating differences within the community, promoting justice, impartiality, and fairness, and welcoming and inviting diversity into decision-making. The big first step of this will be reviewing the equity audit that was performed last year. And speaking with Mr. Tracy before the meeting, it sounds like in the next week or so, that should be coming out. Getting ahold of that, reviewing it with staff, with families, with caregivers, and then beginning to look at what are the next steps that we can make at the elementary level based on that report. The third goal for Bueker, this is a school-specific goal, is thinking about supporting our English-language learning students by developing a system to track language acquisition and expand teacher skills in supporting English-language learning students. We have a number of new EL families this year here at Bueker at varied levels of English. Some are quite skilled and some are just learning it now. What we've been thinking about is how do we track the progress of that? You know, we have our benchmark assessments for ELA, we have them for math, but we have this new need of how do we track this, this movement in, in learning English? You know, we have our once-a-year standardized test that we do with them through the state, but we need something that can give us a little more granularity to that. And then also thinking about how do we communicate with those families? We now have eight different home languages that are spoken, spoken at Bueker, and making sure that our communications that go out support the translation needs of our families.
So our Cutler specific goal is really, I'm focusing on my own entry plan this year. So as part of coming into the district over the summer, I met with all members of Central Office, asking the same questions, which are, what do you see as the strengths? What do you see as the opportunities? What are the challenges? And what are your expectations of me as principal of Cutler School? I have done the same with every staff member in the building. I've set up listening groups with parents, and I will be visiting classrooms and asking similar questions, and really, and that in combination with my own observations, conversations at school council, and our building leadership team meeting, and our IST team meeting, having those same conversations there with my observations will allow me to have a lens into the school and be able to identify the work that needs to be done that will be meaningful for teachers and the larger community. I will synthesize all of that information, share it with teachers, certainly share it with Mr. Tracy and the parent community, so that we can really think through intentional goals for the next school improvement plan cycle, although of course, get working on much of that this year as well. So that's our goal three.
And Winthrop's third goal is for staff to deepen an understanding of inclusive practices to support all students, identify and implement consistent school-wide inclusive practices to improve the learning outcomes for all students. This goal is also linked directly to goals, to district goals 2A and 3. And some of the things that we wanna consider is that this is the beginning of a multi-year process tied to our elementary MTSS goal. We're gonna begin working on this goal in January, where the staff is gonna complete a self-assessment on their understanding of inclusive practices and UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning. We're gonna use the results of those, of the self-assessment to inform our ongoing PD in our building meetings in February, March, and April. We'll be focused around this idea, and we'll be looking for evidence of what teachers are learning and how they're implementing that through observations, and then their evidence that they're submitting under the standard two for teaching all students.
Thank you. Do you wanna do questions for each level or wait till they're all done?
Wait, we're already there. Oh, you mean what?
Yeah, with just the elementary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's do elementary questions.
Any questions?
Thank you all very much for that presentation. I'd like to ask the committee to, if you have any questions? Let's start with any, yes?
I do have a question.
Yep.
I have a comment and a question. I just wanna say thank you for being here tonight after a long day. I know it's not always your favorite thing, and I appreciate the effort you put into the goals. I guess I have two questions. And I think that your goals seem like they address this, but now that this is sort of the first year back in a normal-ish environment from COVID, do you feel like a lot of this is sort of a, the goals to me read as a little bit of a reset on a lot of evaluation, a lot of new technology to try to get a better sense of where kids really are? Is that an accurate, non-technical summary of kind of what's driving some of your academic goals here?
So I think that the first two goals are continuations of work that we began last year, and it's more refined. And then the addition of CKLA as our core English-language arts curriculum is a driving force for goal, our Goal One. But yes, I do agree, Anna, that we are now trying really hard to sort of see where kids are and what the implications of the last two and a half years have been in moving kids for.
There is a piece of the, of the literacy part that does date back to before COVID. In the months prior to the lockdowns, we were beginning to have conversations about literacy. We had pages and pages of data on the wall in the conference room at Central Office, looking at four or five years' worth of literacy data. And we were beginning to have those conversations. We were beginning to interview consultants to be, help us tease through this, and then the world shut down. So part of this dates back pre, and then now it's kind of, we're looking at it through a different lens of, also, how do we get a sense of where kids are right now?
Okay. Ben, don't go away, I have an extra question for you, too. You said there are eight different languages?
Yes.
In the mix at Bueker? I'm curious to know, you don't have to get all eight, I'm curious to know what they are. And related to that, are we at all moving towards comprehensive translation of district communications to be bilingual at all times? Because that's something a lot of districts do, but I haven't noticed that we've been doing that yet.
Eric and I actually have talked about that recently. I have moved my Bueker bulletin over onto the website as a blog post there, which does translate into a number of languages. I've reached out to the tech department to get some more languages in there. And Eric and I have been talking recently about how the Blackboard system that we use for his newsletters at the end, the end of the week does allow for translation, that we can pick specific users with specific languages, so that our emails that go out through that or even text messages about school being canceled can go out in multiple languages.
Awesome.
All right. And I'll see if I can do the eight. English, Spanish, Portuguese, French, Armenian, Russian, Korean, Chinese.
Amazing.
Yeah.
All right.
I think, one thing to note, Ben's really kind of led the way in saying, I'm gonna try this. So he, you know, started with his newsletter to say, all right, how do I get this out? He does, he held the L population. So just by that grouping in his building, he's gonna have a higher number of languages and home languages. So the goal now is to really work to identify the correct home languages in Aspen, which syncs with our, with the Blackboard Connect program. And according to what we're, we're learning, that trigger will allow the letter to be translated via Blackboard, and it'll be received at home in the home language.
And we have high confidence in the accuracy of that automated translation?
The, the translation is, is, I forget the engine name, but it's similar to the one that we use on our website.
Okay.
And oddly, the company that owns our website just bought Blackboard, so I'm gonna assume there's some integration there. It's, it seems, I mean, Ben's been using it. It seems to be accurate. I think Ben said to me the other day, he said, one of my parents commented about that, you know, that it was in the language, the home language, so.
That's great.
It's sometimes hard to get families to tell us what the home language is, because they're, they'll, they'll wanna say, you know, I want my child to learn in English. But we're trying to just work on making sure we can get that right first before we push it out.
And I also wanna make sure that the languages that we are communicating in are, are the right language. We have a number of families who marked on their home language survey, no, I don't need any translation services. But having spoken with some of these families on the phone, I think it would be better if we could. And so I wanna make sure that that option is out there for everyone, even those families who said they don't need translation services.
See, one more thing.
Yeah.
It's also good to note that we have a translation service, so if there's an issue at school and they need to communicate at home, they meaning the principal, a counselor, we have a third-party translation service that we call, and they connect with the family, and they'll do the translation for us, so we can have a real-time phone call and communication and get that word at home, so.
We had a family who started a couple days into the school year, and when they came in, we immediately called the line. We were able to get a Portuguese translator and have a really nice conversation between me and the parents.
Yeah. No, we use, we use a service like that at my employer, and it's, it's amazing how quickly. And it's assuring, too, because everything is, at least in that service, I'm assuming it's a state contract, end-to-end encrypted, and everyone is, you know, trained in confidentiality and compliance and whatnot, so that's, it's great.
Okay. David?
How, how do we benchmark out at the moment on math skills? And has, do you see a detectable impact of COVID on that? And where are, where are we in a recovery, if there is a recovery?
How do we benchmark? I didn't hear what you said.
On, on mathematics skills?
On mathematics. Um.
Ben, can you just move the microphone just a little closer to you?
Sorry. It's not, I wanna fall and everybody else.
Sorry.
Blow my back out tonight.
The mic extends.
So a piece of that right now is using local assessments. Every unit within investigations has an end-of-unit assessment. The screener that we're doing is more of a number-cent screener. Another point of data that we're using is looking at MCAS data. It, from my perspective, is better looking at how math instruction looks at the, at the classroom and building level as opposed to individual kids, but combining that with the local assessments, we can really get a handle on where kids are.
And how do we align with the norms?
How do we?
Sorry, how do we align with the norms? Are they, are they where you would expect them normally?
Oh, like where, where are we right now?
Yeah.
We're, we're doing okay. You know, obviously, the last two years was really tricky. I've been looking at some of the MCAS data, and, you know, fractions were, were, were hard. That was one that, that really impacted people. So we're, you know, beginning to look at some of that data, which also gives us some ideas of where we need to do some backfilling this year as we continue on with the curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? I, I had a quick question. Anna actually asked part of it about the language. I just wanted to ask, I was really happy to see that part of the goal, I believe it's in Goal One, about the communications regarding the literacy. I was really excited that that was part of the action steps, because I think the community has focused in on knowing that this is something that the district is really working on. I just, can you, I wondered if you could just tell me a little bit more about the anticipated ways they're gonna communicate that out? I know you said, I just may have just sort of, there was a lot of information there.
So within each unit at each grade level, there's a parent letter at the beginning of each unit. And so K-2, they have the two components, the skills component and the knowledge component. And as the grades start each new unit, that parent letter will go home to give parents that information. And, you know, to say that that's on top of the teachers that send home their biweekly newsletters and are keeping parents apprised that way also. I personally try to include a little bit about CKLA in my family newsletters each week, or if there's something that each grade level's learning about, I try to throw in a little bit of a blurb. So we're just trying to keep it a constant flow of information, and we're open for questions and, you know, parents wanna know more, we have, we can certainly give them what they need.
Okay, thank you.
And just to tack onto that, we've talked about And just to tack on to that, we've talked about a potential for like a family literacy night to really be able to communicate with parents around this is how we used to teach literacy, this is how we as adults learned it, and this is why we thought it was a good idea at the time. This is what we've learned in the last 15 years and these are the changes we've made and this is why and this is, you know, why we're doing things the way that we are and why it feels different from the literacy instruction we had when we were in school.
Thank you.
I love that idea. That's great.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you all so much. That was really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Dr. Zachary Best, our new middle school principal, to tell us a little about the middle school goals.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Zach Best. I am the new middle school principal and I'm really happy to be here. Thanks so much for giving us a chance to share a little bit with you tonight. So we have three goals that I would like to share with you tonight. Our first goal, similar to the elementary goal, is directly related to the district goal, so it should look a little bit familiar. We are going to implement a data process to review student progress and, starting in sixth grade and then we anticipate moving to seventh and eighth grade, and that's part of our MTSS structure at the secondary level. Some of our actions that we're going to implement to achieve this, we're going to select a common literacy screener. We have not historically used a literacy screener in the middle grades and we feel like this is a good opportunity to start that. We will also continue to utilize iReady. iReady is a math screener that we have historically used at the middle grades level, but it has not been used consistently and we want to bring a consistent use to that practice. We will create and establish an assessment calendar and I can tell you that at the middle grades this year, we have already selected our literacy screener and that is the Dibble screener that the elementary uses. We will take this year to evaluate if that's going to give us the most benefit, but we had access to it and there is a through line with the work that the elementary grades are doing. We're also going to work with teachers to provide them training. This is something that is a little new to them, so we want to make sure that they're comfortable and have the tools and skills to be able to use that data to inform their instruction. Our second goal is really an operational goal. By the end of the year, I hope to complete, I will complete a systems audit to ensure that there are clearly communicated practices in place that will help support student success. We have a lot of great things happening at Miles River. I don't know if it's the pandemic, I'm sure there's a lot of factors, but this is really an opportunity for us to sort of reset how we track those efforts and how we're ensuring that those efforts are implemented with fidelity. Some of the things that we look forward to implementing, we are going to create, we have created and convened an attendance team. Attendance is something that's really important to us. I do know that the pandemic has impacted attendance across Massachusetts, across the country, and we want to take a very concerted effort at making sure we're periodically reviewing that and putting supports in place for students who might not be attending regularly. We will also implement a consistent discipline reporting process at the middle school. That is not something that we have historically had and the staff and the administration feels like if we have a consistent process in place, we'll be able to not only hold students accountable, but hold ourselves accountable for making sure that we're supporting the students with disciplinary needs. We are also working on a complete audit of our 504s. We have come to find out that some of our 504s are just in different stages. We want to make sure that we're following the guidelines for revisiting those on a regular basis and make sure that those are, that we've had opportunities to meet with the families, make sure that those supports that are in place are appropriate and then that they are updated regularly. And finally, we will put in place a plan to support the social emotional learning needs of our students at the tier one level. I've seen a lot of great work at the tier two and tier three level. We, we really take care of our students. What we lack right now is a systemic approach, excuse me, to making sure that all students have access to high-quality social emotional learning. And we know that that's really important now more than ever. And our third goal is to transition, is to, excuse me, strengthen the transition process from fifth to sixth grade. I believe this goal was in place in the former improvement plan. I also received some feedback that this is an area that some stakeholders are really interested in pursuing. I do want to be clear, our sixth grade team, our counselors do a tremendous job with our students, a lot of positive feedback from our, our families to that effect. What I really want to do is make sure that we are thinking earlier and making sure that all stakeholders feel like that process is, is really as strong as it can be. So we're going, going to start by surveying families to see about their experience, what went well, what would be some areas for growth. We want to involve key stakeholders in getting some additional feedback. I'm interested in working with my colleagues at the elementary level. I'd like to put myself out there to attend some parent meetings early on. And the other thing that we really want to do is look at some of the things that we already have in place, some of the things that we might learn from this process and create and make sure that we have communicated a really strong process that's grade-wide and see how that might carry through the student's experience into their seventh and into the eighth grade years. We know that students struggle with executive functioning, organization. These are things that our sixth grade staff, our counselors do a great job with. How can we capitalize on that work to make it a school-wide expectation, a school-wide experience as they move throughout their time at Miles River? Because we know that when they get into eighth grade, they don't suddenly know how to keep their materials organized and suddenly develop, you know, excellent executive functioning skills without constant support. So those are the three goals that we have. As I told the site council, as I've told the staff, as I've told our building leadership team, this is not an exhaustive list of those things that we're working on, but it seemed like a really nice three goals to capture and share with you tonight. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. That was very helpful. All right. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Anna?
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we've met before either, so welcome to your first school committee meeting too. I guess my question is whether or not there was consideration of a specific middle school goal around DEI issues and culture, because that was one of the preliminary findings from the equity audit, is that the middle school specifically was suffering. And it's interesting, the elementaries have, principals have identified that as a goal, but you have not. It's not really a criticism, just more of an observation that that was something the audit produced as a bit of a red flag for us. And I know it's part of our overall district goals and planning, so part of me feels like it's covered within the broader umbrella, but I was just curious to know if you could address the issue of middle school culture as a goal as you're onboarding, getting to know the district? Because I think that that is an identified weak spot in the district in terms of that practice.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That's a very fair question. That is something that was identified in the superintendent's entry plan. It was identified in conversations with families that I met with. It was identified in conversations with staff that I met with prior to the start of the year. It is something that's very explicit in our building leadership team. We have sort of three overarching themes that we're working on throughout the school year. School culture is one of them, DEIB is another. So that is two of our three themes. We did discuss where does that belong? Does that belong in the school improvement plan? Ultimately, we felt like it wasn't necessarily appropriate to include it here, but we wanted to make sure that everyone that is a stakeholder in the middle school understands that those are two very important things. It, it also felt like, just based on timing, my newness to the building, the assistant principal's newness to the building, that putting it, putting a finalized goal at this time might be somewhat premature. But yes, we have absolutely identified that and that's work that our building leadership team has begun and will be our focus throughout the school year.
Can I jump on that?
Sure.
It's important to note too that we still have our DEIB group working and our professional development committee, the PDC group, working. So they'll also be integrating opportunities through the year for teachers, like we did last year, because you're, you're talking about, at the state level, they're shifting the cultural competence is a big deal right now. They're actually changing the, the rubric for teachers to include cultural competence. It already includes social emotional learning, so it's really encompasses a kind of a broad spectrum, if you will. And I think one of the things that Zach and Kirsten, Losi, and the staff have done a nice job with this year, because I, I feel it and have seen it, is like getting right into the whole belonging piece, including with families. Like there was an open house the other morning, Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning, for new families, to, you know, to invite new families in. So the friends group sponsored this opportunity and I think, I think that's the work that Zach's committed to on the outside. It's important for him. And even talking to one of the families, a woman at the, the parent at the family gathering, she was telling a story, like her daughter was talking about belonging because that's what they talked about in the introduction of school. They met with everybody, talked with them, and her daughter was like, yeah, I really feel like I belong. This is a brand-new family. So I think, I think the work's being done, there's, and it's hard with school improvement plans, I think, for, for, you know, what do you decide on? What's important? What's the priority? And then there's all the other things, you know, like even my goals. My goals really don't encompass all of the things I need to do for the year. And I think, I think that's front and center and with Zach and Kirsten. I think that's, it's part, something you'd see if you go to visit the school.
Thank you. Other members have questions? Amy?
I just have a question. Thank you for laying all this out. I love the idea in goal three of surveying families regarding their experience transitioning from fifth to sixth, because that is a really difficult transition to go to middle school. Is there a plan to survey the students as well in an age-appropriate manner?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, maybe that's not explicitly reflected in here, but whenever somebody asks me, how do you know how things are going at school? My answer is always, I talk to the kids. And so I'm absolutely interested. I'd like to sort of see the dust settle and maybe catch up with them with these specific questions later on in the year, but absolutely, thank you for asking.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? So I also just wanted to make a comment about, I think it was also goal number three about, I just really appreciated the part about talking about the executive functioning and the organization. And to me, that's so much of what middle school is, is, you know, that if, if they can learn that in middle school, that is just, you know, so I really appreciated that being in there and sort of moving that from just a, just moving that to be a school-wide kind of a focus. And I just wanted to give that feedback that I appreciated that. It wasn't really a question, just, all right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Menegony, present the high school plan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight to prevent, or not prevent, but present a school improvement plan for the high school. And I want to start by acknowledging the efforts of our faculty and staff and school council in helping shape this plan because without their input, it's hard to say that it really is a community effort, so I'm glad to hear their voices on this. Similar to the middle school and elementary schools, you know, we're starting off goal number one, continuing our MTSS work from last year because we realize that this is a multi-year process. And last year, our focus at the high school was really working on our curriculum documents to help us move towards getting that tier one foundation in place. Now, as we move into year two, we still have some curriculum work to do, which I'll speak to in a little bit, but where we want to take the next step in terms of building the MTSS model for the high school is bringing a data process to some of the work that we do to support our students. So one place that we want to begin this data process is in the ninth and 10th grade. We feel that supporting our youngest learners can help them as they build and internalize these skills on their own. And when they get to be older high school students, the expectation is, is that they can manage a lot of the work on their own and they know how to seek out help when they need it. However, in ninth and 10th grade, what we are doing right now is we have support blocks, for example, for both freshmen and sophomores, where during power block time, instead of just sort of being in a classroom, we have teachers who, it's actually part of their teaching load, who are able to work with the students specifically right now on executive functioning skills. Because our ninth and 10th grade students who don't do so well typically struggle with organization. Now, we happen to have English and math teachers in those classrooms, which is good because they can provide that specific content assistance. But really the focus is helping these kids become strong students, understanding what it takes to be successful. But in order to accomplish that, I think you need to add data to that process. So what we are in the process of doing right now is developing exit and entry criteria for those support blocks because we, we brought the kids in at the start of the year based on recommendations from eighth grade teachers, but also last year when we ran the support block, we really just brought those kids back in. But we don't need kids to be in there all year if they don't need that level of support. And furthermore, kids who all of a sudden show up in the middle of the year who might need that, we want to hook them up with those teachers. So we are developing entry and exit criteria based on grades, attendance, behavior and things like that. At the same time, we are developing support plans for kids so that way when they get in there into the support block and they can meet the expectations of that support plan, we can start working them out of that support. And then we currently have a ninth grade team of teachers from all subject areas who regularly review grade attendance and behavior data on a biweekly basis and they're able to put supports into place right now for students. I think a good opportunity for us moving forward is the Panorama platform that we have across the district is going to now allow us to extend that data into developing intervention plans for students where we can develop the plans, assign them to staff, track student progress with that, and then move students out of supports that they may no longer need. That's one example of us using data in terms of developing the MTSS model. We also have an after-school academy at the high school and this really is designed for students who, I love them to death, they're very honest, they say, I am not doing any work when I go home. That's great feedback. So what we can do is before you go home, we will have a place for you to do your work. Now, it's only an hour, three days a week after school, but that's three extra hours where kids can get some work done and they're assigned to a staff member who also communicates with the home and with teachers. So it's just another support that we want to put into place. When we ran it a little bit last year as a pilot, what we want to do is enhance it this year, again, using data, where that staff member is regularly looking for students who need that support, communicating with the home and seeing over time if students are getting better at assignment completion, because that is really the stated goal of that program. And then finally, using data in a specific academic area, we chose to focus on math because primarily math teachers are already good at using data. We also feel that there may be some more discrete skills that at the high school level we can still gauge where students are at. I think once they get to the high school and you start looking at literacy data, it can get a little bit complicated knowing where kids are and what they need for support. However, with math, I think those smaller, discrete skills may be something that we can help students with. So we decided to start this year looking at math data. So we'll be doing something similar to what the middle school is doing in terms of finding a screener, developing an assessment calendar, training the math teachers on how to use data, which they already know how to do, but we just want to do it in the context of the data tool that we have. And then importantly, using the data, so developing focused lessons where when you find out students are struggling with something, can you hook them up with the right instruction that will help them get back on track? So that was a very long goal, number one. Goal number two is nice, it's short. We need to, by the end of the school year, get our curriculum documents in a condition where they're regularly used as part of the planning process. A lot of times I think curriculum mapping was seen as a secondary exercise when it is not. It is the principal design document where you should be doing all of your planning work out of, because that's where you're not only identifying objectives and learning activities and, and pacing things out, but also embedding in the supports that you can see at the different tiers. So the foundation of MTSS is really having strong tier one instruction. That's where we want to get to by the end of the school year. Because we need to do that, we're setting that as a goal. NIASC has also, in their draft report, said, you need to have this done. So they've been very clear about that. What we have done so far with this is we've updated the curriculum audit that we did last year based upon the work that was done in 2022. And then right now, we have it in our PD calendar to work up through just about the end of first semester, getting our core course maps, again, in the condition where they're regularly used for planning. I don't ever want to say done because done implies you put them away and don't look at them again. That's not what we want. So that is our second goal for the high school. Goal number three is a repeat of last year and it's going to be a repeat until we feel we are in a better place. We want to increase the proportion of students going from the middle school to our high school. school. We lost 36 students last year from the class of 2026, and that is not acceptable. So what is it going to take to get us to a better place? We need to continue to analyze the data year over year, how many kids are leaving, where they're going to, because that is an important point to consider. But we also need to start interviewing these families and the students to figure out, what is it that's making you not want to come to the high school? You know, we have some preliminary findings about why that's the case, but I still think that we need to get a more nuanced view of what exactly is going on there. The same time, we're trying to learn, we also want to entice kids to come to the high school. So we need to make sure we're disseminating information specifically about our ninth grade program. I think we have a pretty strong induction of the high school for our students. We have a dedicated ninth grade counselor. We have a ninth grade team of teachers. We have a ninth grade mentoring program where our upperclassmen mentor our ninth graders for an entire school year. And there really is just a focus in scheduling on choosing the right teachers to work with our freshmen. So we have that for our kids, and it's up to us to keep publicizing that to the community, that we help kids get off to a good start at the high school. We're also going to look in the springtime to have our ninth grade teachers go down and, and start meeting the eighth graders, to let them know, this is who your teachers are going to be next year. It's really not that difficult. Just walk through the red doors and down the hallway by the gym. It can be that easy sometimes. We're also, in a couple of weeks, going to be having our high school open house as we did last year. And the point of that is to share our academic and extracurricular and athletic opportunities to the community. We are going, we're really extending that to all middle school families, because kids start thinking about where they're going to go to high school, probably even before they get to middle school. But certainly, once they're there, we want to invite them in to be a member of our community. And then throughout the year, we're going to be tracking kids' plans about where they want to go to high school, because I do see that from the middle school, about which kids are applying out. And then what we want to do this year with that knowledge is to really start meeting with families as they may consider other options, and letting them know individually what we have at the high school for their children, because I think that, that connection with the family is very, very important. So that's our third goal. And we link that actually to our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging goal, because some of the data that we have about why kids are not coming to the high school, I think, speaks to the need for us to focus on that and the creation of community and a place where students would want to go. And then school goal number four is looking to see what performance gaps do we have at the high school? Now, it's very easy to roll through DESE's data and see where MCAS scores are. You can look at college board data and see SAT scores and AP scores, but there's a lot more to student life than those things, thankfully. You know, we can look and see, what does our student leadership structure look like at the high school? What are our sports teams look like at the high school? What are the composition of different classes at the high school? Looking at grades, you know, every quarter, we put out about 3,000 grades, and so we should be looking at that kind of information. And we do have subgroups of kids in the high school. We have students of color. We have low-income students. We have boys. We have girls. We have students who identify not as boys and girls. There are many different groups of students to consider. And what we want to do this year is really take the time to investigate, what are the performance gaps that we may see? And it's important to us to do that, because performance at the high school level, I think, really is linked to opportunity. How you do in school, and that's defined broadly, I think, can determine how many options you're going to have at the end of four years. And that's our goal, is to, to allow kids to build as many options as possible by the time they walk across the stage of graduation. So looking at these performance gaps is important, because again, it ties back to the things that the students are going to be able to do after high school. But I don't want to just sort of cherry pick one, maybe that I'm interested in or a couple of people are interested in. We're going to look at this as a school over time. The nice thing is, is that we have several layers of leadership at the high school. We have student leadership. We have a building leadership team. We have an instructional leadership team, and we have a school council. So we can use these different groups to sort of vet the data that we pull out and figure out, what are the two or three things that maybe we want to focus on? Because this is going to be a multi-year goal, I think. Maybe this year, identifying some areas of future study, and then next year, digging into it even more. And I would tie this, I guess, again, to the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging goal, because we need to see, you know, how students feel that they belong in our community. Because when you feel that you're part of something, I think you're going to perform better. And that's going to be part of the work that we do this year. So those are our four goals. They're all linked back to a district goal, and I, and they're going to be, I think, goals that are going to be worth repeating over multiple years till we get to a place where we're feeling better about where we're at.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Manigoni? David?
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that you're, you're going to have a systematic investigation of the reasons for, for kids choosing not to go to the high school. But what's your sense, and I guess a question to Eric, because you were running the high school for eight years. What's your sense of, of, in rough rank order, of the reasons why they're not choosing to stay?
We, we have collected some data on it already, so we, I don't want to say we know, but what has sort of come up, you know, is, is kids' experience in previous years, maybe it wasn't great. And we're also looking through the lens of the pandemic too, so I'm not sure we get really clean information there. The one thing that is not pandemic-related is facilities. That comes up right away. And it's primarily the athletic facilities that's cited, just because of the visibility and the scale of those particular places on campus. But it's, it's really looking at those two things. And the good thing is, is that, you know, we have the ability to change those. But it's, both, fixing both of those things is going to be a multi-year process as well.
Right, no, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Anybody else? Right? Oh, Anna?
Thank you. I just want to sort of pick up that a little bit too, because I think, I'm, I'm really glad to see so much focus on the high school as sort of the, I'm trying to find the right words to say this exactly the right way, especially with the elementary and middle school principals listening so carefully. But if you think of the district as, you know, a culmination, right? Like, students start as littles in this, you know, beautiful little Bukeur School, and then they work their way through, and they go to the middle school. And in theory, if the district is really doing everything that we want us to be doing, I'm going to Van and White at you, ready? The mission statement, if we are doing what we say we want to do, then in theory, you know, you should have kids making that journey all the way to the end of high school. And so I think it's really good that, that you as building leadership and we as the school committee are looking at this trend, because it really says that our, our elementary schools are doing well and people like them here. People stay here for elementary. And then a lot of people stay here for middle school, but then there's this exodus, which speaks to something that is truly a breakdown of the system, because if we're losing our kids right before they get to the final sort of capstone moments, that's, that is the problem. Because it's almost like if you start the journey at kindergarten, but you don't finish them at grade 12, I don't want to say that's, it's not a failure, because it's, education is, is a process, but it is kind of a failure. Like, we want those kids to stay here. So I think it's really good we're spending so much time focusing on this, because what I want to know is how much of it is within the control of this group of people and the principals here, and how much of it is going to have to be that partnership with the towns and the voters around facilities and expectations? Because there's only so much we can do here, right? And we can talk about it, we can advocate for it, we can get on the floor of town meeting and do some crazy things to make things happen, but ultimately, there's a limit to what the district can do. So I think, I really want to know the answers to goal three especially and four, because I think that they are related. And it's striking to me that when we have kids leave in the district, they're usually going to incredible places, right? I have a friend whose child's, you know, we have kids getting into Exeter and Andover and, you know, St. John's and Pingery, and you know, these are, and, and other, other private schools around. It's not like they're going off to, you know, poor institutions, which says that we, through middle school, are preparing them very well, right? If we have students able to get into schools of that caliber, thinking especially sort of the Andover, Exeter crowd, I mean, those are tough schools to get into. And our kids are getting into them and choosing to go there. And to some degree, I don't fault them, because it was our top tier, but that says to me, we're really losing those kids. And I want to stop that, but I want us to know what we can control and what we cannot control. Because if we can't control it from this body, then we need to broaden our scope of what we're trying to do as a community. I also will just say that I like that goal number four speaks directly to the Student Opportunity Act and talking about the subgroups and always kind of keeping that at the forefront. And I have to think for, Eric, for SOI purposes, it's good to have this goal on paper and have some information feeling back into it. Is that right?
Yeah, SOA, you mean?
For the Student Opportunity Act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think part, part of what will happen is that it'll kind of be convergent information coming from all the levels, because Ben's working on a piece of the puzzle, Brian's working on a couple pieces of the puzzle. You start to look at the middle school, so they, they start to, you know, blend together, if you will. And one of the things I said to all the leadership team at the beginning of the year when we had our retreat is, when we're looking at our data and we're, we're determining, we're looking at subgroups, and we're also looking at taking an equity pause, which means stop and try to move away from your usual look at data and think about other ways. Brian talked about opportunity gaps. I think, you know, we, we would see them at the middle and elementary as, as well. And we, we see that in our current data that will present, I think it's next meeting, the MCAS data. So there's a lot of information that'll be kind of converging on the same points. We're, the communication piece is part of it, if you remember, you know, finding ways to invite families in of all the subgroups, if you will. So there, there is a link that goes through.
Method to the madness. Anyway, thank you. I think these are all really great, and I want to say thank you to all the principals for what you've done here. It's good.
Now, let's send them home.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you all very, very much. And you are, of course, always welcome to stay, but please go home.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. That was great. All right. Eric, you are up on the superintendent goals.
Okay, thank you very much. I went back from the draft goals last time. Hold on, I'm stuck here. Went back from the draft goals of last time and made some adjustments and corrections, cleaned some things up, added some of the indicators where people felt there should be a tighter focus, and added in the, the, the bottom goal here, which was not on the previous one, the fifth goal, professional learning, to continue with the NISIP program. And then really, it's funny, as I went through the school improvement plans with, with the principals and started to look at how they started to make connections, there are, there are really straight connections through everything right now, from district all the way down to school level and in many classrooms too, as you start to look at some of the, the things that are going on. So this is the cleaned up version. I think I got everything. I went back through the last meeting to make sure I got them all.
Okay. Does it make sense just to ask if there's any questions? Unless you wanted to say?
Any further questions?
All right, questions?
Actually, I have one question, and it's sort of, I didn't want to ask it earlier, but I think it kind of ties in with the school improvement plans and sort of with your school improvement plans, where, you know, still looking for 20 teachers, right? Where does that sort of fit into all of this? I, you know, at some point, I mean, I understand that it's not just us, it's a systemic problem, but at, at what point do, you know, we start looking inwards and saying, how do we fill these roles? Is there anything that we're not doing to become a more attractive?
Yeah.
You know?
So it's, it's, it's one of those things that could be goal six, you know, the building committee could be.
I'm not trying to put anything more on your plate, I.
No, but I think that's, we're definitely working on that.
The mission statement.
That's an important question. I mean, we, Vinnie and I have talked about it several times, you know, the, the, it's important to note that all but one teaching position is, is not filled, all of our teaching positions. We have one, and the reason we have one is because we're trying to change the way we're doing business. So for instance, in this case, his Schneider over at the Cutler said, I have three open TA positions, and I think I'll be better served by making some program adjustments if I can trade them in for one full-time special ed teacher. So that was a, a, a change that we approved two, two, two weeks ago, I believe, in trying to better utilize what we have already and making some of those adjustments. So we've done that twice since the start of school with programs to, to kind of rearrange programs, if you will, but also to bring in, you know, a set of three TAs. That's kind of like the equal point, three TAs equal a, a teacher on the fifth salary, fifth level salary scale. And it's, we're trying to do things like that. We're trying to look at programs themselves. We just learned that one of our TAs on the elementary school is a licensed certified special ed teacher, and nobody knew it. So we're like, hey, we have, you know, we have a job for you. So we're actually looking within as well, trying to, trying to move some people around. The majority of the positions, positions open now. You have a whole bunch of coaching positions open, which is, is normal, because those seasons haven't occurred yet, so for, for, for winter and spring. Things like crossing guards, substitutes, we need a, we need a ton of substitutes. We have very few. It's, it's unfortunate. You know, Brian was the best example, he and I were talking this week, where he had five teachers out and no substitutes. That causes a strain, a different kind of strain on the school. TAs are, are an issue, so we're starting to move some around. We're actually starting to combine some half-times into full-times, which make them more attractive, harder for, to hire a point-six teacher, or excuse me, TA for a program, when we can now say, okay, we have a point-six here, a point-six here, let's combine them into one. Yes, we lose a little of an FTE, but it at least is helping us to service our kids. So those are the things we're doing now, just to try to, try to make those connections. We even talked through Vinnie, hey, what about a $500 a bonus for, you know, like a signing bonus or something? So, you know, those are, those are real things. We're actually talking with, I met with all the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable last Friday. They're all doing the same thing, like, okay, should I bump up my substitute rate to $130 a day, or should I, you know, create some new way to, to entice people using money or other benefits? You know, one of the issues we keep running into is we hire a TA, and they say, yes, I want benefits. And they, we, we give them a benefits package, here are your choices, and the, the reality is, there's nothing left in their check if they take benefits. So our TA salary scale may be something we look at in the future, which impacts that overall budget, you know? That's, that's, that's a fairly large scale move, you know? So we are making things like that. We moved, we've expanded our part-time kindergarten aides to full-times. We're, so we're just trying to, it's like putting Legos together, you know? We'll take this halftime and this quarter time and move that together, so. Vinnie, it's a little messy this year for Vinnie to keep track of, but we're, we're trying to fill some of those voids.
Get bored if we give them an easy year.
Yeah. He hasn't had one yet, so.
All right. That was, that was really important, and also I do want to refocus on the goals, but thank you for asking that. That was helpful. Does anybody have any other things on the goals? I, I just wanted to say, I, I think you've done a great job. I'm fully in support. I want to just say to, to everyone, there are a lot of indicators on here, and I, I just want us to be mindful of that, that like, I know that when we did it, the, you know, first go around, we sort of were sort of counseled that there, that that might be. So it'll just be an interesting experience, I think, from the, not so much from your end, maybe, or maybe a little bit from your end, that you have to provide a lot of information so that we can do the evaluation. I think it's going to be a learning experience for all of us to see whether we really, going forward, like whether this is, this is a lot or not.
And I'll organize the data around the, the indicators to help, you know, usually I categorize them by standard and then indicator as well, so I'll try and make it as easy as possible.
Yeah, no, I, and, and again, I know that having a lot of indicators is a challenge for you, just in terms of providing all the documentation and things. So that's just a comment. It's not, I don't think it's a negative. I think it's, we're all learning to work together, and this is what happened, is that we have a lot. we have a lot. Okay, is there any further comment? All right. And you, we need a vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Amy, do you have a motion?
Okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee accept the superintendent's goals as written and linked in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? All right. And that is unanimous of the five members who are present and the motion passes. Okay. Thank you, Eric, for all your work on that. Next up, we have some policies. I'm not sure who's talking.
I'll, I, I will start as the chair of the policy subcommittee and who's worked on this for a while, but I might at any moment turn to Amy. Just for context, especially for David and, and Amy, who were not part of this journey. So these policies were really heavily driven by changes at the state and federal level. And if you recall, I believe it was in September of 2020, policy ACAB was substantially rewritten because of changes in federal law. So we adopted it and looked through it. Then the MSC, MASC, excuse me, went through and made more changes. And the last time that we as a body looked at these, I went back and pulled it, it was April 7th, 2022. And at that meeting, there was a request for a red line version, which is standard, to which I said, that is harder than it seems, but we'll try. And so then, over the next several months, we had new election, people came on, people came off, we had the summer. And in a way, it was good that we bought ourselves some time because then the other thing that happened is that there were more changes made at the state and federal level. And in December 2021, the MASC came out with a bulletin with yet more updates. And then the other thing that's happened in the intervening time was the passage of the Crown Act. So what you see here, I know it's a little confusing and I want to give Amy big credit, formal, big props for trying to take all the changes and put them into a digestible format. So what you see here now in this explanation is sort of the high level of what has happened, which is that policy AC, which we had always had, was split into two parts. There is AC and AC dash R, which is sort of a bit instructional in a way. It's, it has some definitions. The two go together, they're not, they are not the same. That's, it's the main policy and sort of a supplementary part of it. And then policy ACAB, which was previously all harassment, was broken into its two more specific subparts, which was harassment of students, which was due to the J section. And then there still is policy ACAB, but it is specific to sexual harassment. So what you see is two policies that we previously had adopted have now become four policies. And then Amy, so, so that's high level. And the reason that this has come up for us is that we had inconsistencies, especially in our protected classes. The state attorney general and the MASC have been agreeing with that, so a lot of the changes have to do with that listing of protected classes. The good thing about us making these adoptions now is that we are now in alignment with the MASC policies and with state and federal law. And it will also help our handbook be consistent. So I know I personally have always said, we have 27 versions of these classes, could we please make it have one? And the attorney general said, yes, you should have one group and this is what it should be. So I would move that we accept these tonight and move on with it. But what Amy did, this is where I might turn it over to Amy, because this is her work product, to try to make sense to anyone not on policy, what has changed and why. And Amy, I'll turn it over.
Yeah, so I'm going to just, that's fine, if you want to.
Sure.
I, what I was going to say is that, well, okay, well, maybe, do you have something you'd like to say? Because what I was going to say is that first we might really just address, which I found to be very helpful, I printed it, this little, that was very helpful. Well, so I, because what I'd like to do eventually is go through each one, but, but maybe, I don't know, I found, I don't know if other people just wanted to start with questions or if you want to start giving us a little expla- oversight, overview.
I could just give an overview of what all of the colors mean on the sheets. So on all of the following pages, the current policy is on the left and the proposed new policy is on the right. And the yellow sections are language that is the same. And then the magenta highlights are the ones that differ between the two. And then in the margin at the top, you can see the section name AC, when it was adopted by our district and then the proposed. So every single page of this document is those, are those two pages together with their, like, corresponding information. If you, so this section, sorry, where there's blank on the left, can you just go up one page?
Go one.
Yeah. This AC, ACR, we currently don't have an ACR section, so that's why this is blank. The next section is ACAB, which as you saw on the first page, was one, like, giant policy that we've now broken up into two. So I've compared JICK, which the language of it is actually very similar, as you can see by all the yellow, and fit in, I stopped on the left of ACAB where it doesn't align anymore and moved it down to the next page of ACAB, because that's where they start to become the same again. So hopefully you all got a chance to review it and that my marks sort of made sense and just helped you decide whether or not the language is appropriate and similar enough to vote on.
Okay. I'm going to open up questions. I'm, I, I have one to start with.
I'm sure.
So my understanding of the AC, I, I mean, I think this was very clear and this is definitely, I think, what we were looking for the first time round. This was very helpful. This little chart was very helpful. But just in looking at the AC, splitting up into the two AC and then the ACR policies, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what your general, the policy committees understand. Like, it appeared to me that AC, the new AC policy, is sort of a more overarching, kind of what I would say is sort of a mission-ish kind of a policy. And then the ACR is kind of like a more, it felt like a more sort of definitional legal and maybe even kind of disciplinary. Does that, like, is that an accurate, like, that was my takeaway was from those two. I just kind of want to make sure I'm sort of understanding it, the way the policy committee is understanding it.
That's, you're exactly right. I just want to know, it's not that we didn't have AC dash R, it's that it, it's that it didn't exist. It's new.
Correct.
And the MASC put it out. And Dana, your understanding is exactly right. It is sort of literally the definitions of what do those, what do those words mean and providing with evidence. And I will say, just in general, we're seeing in the entire policy review that this is a new thing the MASC is doing, that you'll have the main policy and then you'll have the, you know, AC dash R. And the dash R, I'm not entirely sure why it's R, but it is, tends to be, here is some supplementary information, here is a process, here is a definition, here is something that makes it a little deeper. So it's almost like a, I don't.
There's references too, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's almost like a footnote, you know? It's like an end note, like, here's the main policy and here's pieces of it that I think historically used to be in the main document, that they've now separated out for a little bit of clarity. So as policy works this way through, you will see other examples of main policy dash R along the way. We're seeing it in more than one spot. But Dana, you're right.
Good.
Like always.
No, not at all. All right, other questions? So does it make sense to do, because I have, I do have a couple of minor things on some of the, so does it make sense to do each one of these one at a time? I understand you want them all, all together.
No, I think we should and, and I'll confess, I don't know what the terminology would be. I, I think we've read them too many times. Even as I read them one more time, there are tiny little Scrivener's errors that still.
I found one.
Yeah, there's a couple. I will also say.
It's like a period and wonderful.
Yeah, no, and it's interesting, Dorothy was funny too, because we, of course, get everything from Dorothy and we kind of have to customize it. And even she, at one point in the middle of last week, I said, okay, we need the very most updated JICK. And she sent me one and I said, but it's missing this. And she's like, oh, you're right, it's missing that. So even she is juggling with multiple flavors. So there are a couple little Scrivener's errors that I, I would point out and fix before we call them. Good. But I do agree, I think we should go each one. And I don't know if you want to vote individually or treat it like a consent agenda, do the whole batch or however you want to do it.
Let's, let's do a motion on each one and we can just, that way if there's any, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee adopt the new AC and ACR or no, just AC?
I would just do one at a time.
Okay. New AC policy as linked in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. Okay. Is there, are there comments, questions or discussion on this, on the new AC policy? Okay. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? All right. And that is unanimous of the five members present and the motion passes. All right. Keep going, Amy.
I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee adopt the ACR policy as linked in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna. All right. And anybody have any questions, comments, further discussion? Anna.
This is one I would like to make a Scrivener's thing. I think there's a funny little space after developmentally appropriate.
Yes.
It's inconsistent and I would like to remove that little extra space. In the top of the first paragraph.
It's in the top paragraph. At the bottom.
Here, I highlighted it.
Yep, I see it.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
So I have a few of these little errors and I didn't want to correct them outside of an appropriate meeting on my own. So would this be a place where I, we would want to, like, list them all out to change or would we just want to say in general, we'll fix typographical errors?
I think we could, if they are, if they are things, I mean, in other words, I, I know I found one, there's an, like, an underlined, there's an underline, errant underline in one of them. I, I mean, we certainly could make a motion, I don't, I don't know exactly, but we certainly could make a motion to approve them with.
We've, we've never had, like, we've never had to make that motion before and I think that the subcommittee has the power to do, you know, we've already elected them to be the subcommittee. Go, part of the process is formatting.
Right, formatting. And I mean, I think, right, we could do it. I mean, that's fine with me, that there's no reason, you're not making substantive changes.
None of them are substantive, no.
No.
Because there's so many documents here, it doesn't matter how thorough you think you are every time you look.
I mean, I've, I've literally read these, I don't know, a thousand times, and I think at some point, it's just delirium, so.
We don't have to go to print with them.
So I think unless there's, unless, without, if there's, unless there's objections, I think that there's just general understanding that the policy committee can, you know, formatting, spacing.
So to that effect, then I'll just state that if there are minor Scrivener's errors that are non-substantive before Janelle locks them down, then Eric, you know, Amy and I and David can look and see if there's something that we've seen with our eyes. I know Amy found some, I found some. So just before they go live, assuming they all pass, let's just try to make sure that we don't have the errant underlines and spaces and we can look at that together.
I think we have a motion on the table.
We do, yeah.
Correct, for ACR, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All right. And that is unanimous of the five members present and the motion passes. Okay.
I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee adopt the new JICK policy as linked in the agenda.
Well, I'll switch. I skipped one.
You skipped one, that's okay.
Oh, I did.
Is there a second?
Oh, you know what? I was looking at the chart.
It's okay.
That we need, sorry.
No one seconded it, so you can try it again.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, try again.
Try again, okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee adopt new policy ACAB as linked in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna Seadwick. I actually had just a, just, this is just a curiosity question. How, how much of this sort of came directly from the state?
My understanding from Dorothy and Eric or Amy or David is a lot. The attorney general went through and did a pretty thorough redo of a lot of it, so not to say that we can't change small things, but I would be very hesitant to change.
I actually wasn't any suggestion to change, I just, it read very much, like, it just came straight from the state and I.
Like, there's a huge chunk of it.
Oh, yeah.
And I, sort of for my own, this is not me, this is just, this is not, I'm not on the policy committee, I just, a lot of it I read and I sort of felt like, this isn't really policy, it's just quoting Massachusetts General Law.
Yep.
And I sort of, if, to my way of thinking, I would, it would just be like, you could just say Massachusetts General Law 119, Section 51, not then repeat the entirety of the law. But if it's the way the state does it, I'm not, it's not a complaint, it's just a comment.
I think, I don't know if I should say this, I believe that the law says we have to actually publish the law. I think that's how that ended up this way. Because there's, there are a couple of things like that, that we got, we got, we got corrected on with our legal team two years ago when we were doing handbooks. They made some adjustments because we didn't actually put, like.
That was the Title IX stuff, wasn't it? We had to put the entire law.
Felony or the suspension, that's the exact law. It says you have to put the law in your handbook. So it may be that, but I'm not 100% positive.
No, I just.
We've done a lot of policy work.
For me, for me, philosophically, the policy is supposed to be the, like, the policy and this really got very legally.
Yes, I don't disagree, but, yeah.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
No, just that this one is the one that has that errant period that is, needs to come out. The only thing I'll draw people's attention to, we had a little back and forth about page four, where it says, list the name of the person and list the appropriate party. We kept the instructional in there. We met back and forth a little, just to show that we were complying with the instructions of the document itself and just to draw people's attention that within our district, Stacy has some authority as the title line coordinator for students and Vinnie is the title line coordinator for staff and third parties. And that, I just want to make sure people see that and that's why it says, list the name, just to show we're in compliance right there. It's a little awkward. Amy was correct, it's, it's awkward, but I think we decided to keep it.
For what it's worth, that's how I interpreted it when I read it. That's what you guys did.
You read our mind, Dana.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All right. And that is unanimous of the five members present and the motion passes. Okay. One more.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton-Wannam Regional School Committee adopt policy JICK as linked in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anna. Questions? Discussion?
This one has a couple little errors and actually it does have a word that was just missed when it was copied over from all the other things, the Crown Act. It's missing the "of" harassment on the basis of race. That word really does need to be there. And it is present in the other very new Crown Act language that was put in just last December. So I think it's, again, just a, MASC has a lot of versions of these, so.
Okay. Anything else? Looks like we're ready to vote. All right. All those in favor? All right. All right. That is, uh, five. And, um, yep. All right. And, uh, that is unanimous of the five members present and the motion passes. Thank you, Policy Committee. And, um, thank you very much for the, lots of work that went into that. Very complicated.
I, I'd like to say something on Amy's behalf. Well, I want to say two things. The first one is Eric, it's my understanding that now we've adopted these, every time the district has a list of protected classes, we can now use this list, right?
These policies? Yes.
Now that we're done with.
Yeah, I mean, I also think we have to kind of resend these out as updates to the.
Oh, 100%. Actually, I think one of them requires us to do so. So I just want to make sure that is done. This one I want to say about Amy is I love having multiple graphic designers on the school committee, David and Amy on design table over there. But this was a huge amount of work that Amy put in. And she has requested that the full committee not expect that she does that at every moment. Because I don't know that that's a sustainable way to look at policy. So moving forward, we'll hopefully just do red line changes if it's appropriate. But I, I just want to give Amy very specific credit. You're amazing. And I hope you never have to do that again because that was too much.
Well, it's okay. If we need to, we can. And thank you for your sketch for the first slide. That was really helpful.
The first slide was a sticky note that I took a picture of. And I said, I think we need a this, so.
Whatever the process is.
It was all, it was actually all very helpful. And, and thank you. Okay.
Oh, we did it.
No, not yet. Almost.
I meant the policies.
All right. Uh, next we have the budget calendar.
Yeah, I just have a quick update on our budget calendar. Last week, uh, we met for the first chairs only meeting and set the two dates for the all members meeting. They are Wednesday, uh, November 30th and Wednesday, January 11th. Tomorrow morning, I'll probably follow up with everyone with invites in their emails. So you all have it in your calendars. Uh, but those are the two, uh, dates that we're all going to meet here at Bucker at around 6:30.
Vinnie, do, we don't need to vote on this, correct? This is just informational. Yep, okay. Um, so everybody put those dates in your calendars.
Ask a question.
And please, go ahead. Ask away.
So the February adoption date, that off-cycle meeting, February 9th, is the date that ideally we would approve the budget. But then that backup date of Wednesday is just in case.
Just in case you do not pass it. We have one more shot to meet the deadline.
Okay. And then we have a regularly scheduled school committee meeting on February 16th. Would we potentially shift the February 16th meeting to that February 9th and not have a meeting on February 16th? Or are we going to go the 9th and the 16th?
I think that might be up to everyone.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, right.
We just can't have the meeting, we can't have this vote on the 16th because it'll be outside of the.
It's past the date.
Past the deadline.
Okay. So I guess I would just propose if we could, instead of having a one-off meeting just on that one item on the 9th, if maybe we could shift everything to the 9th and not have a meeting on the 16th. Does that make sense?
Is the 16th not the vacation week?
No, the, no, the 16th is the week, is the Thursday before vacation. I understand what you're asking. I think I, I, I think we want to, I think we want to make sure that that's doable, like everything.
As we get closer to it. Because based on this, we have to vote, we have to meet on the 9th, ideally. So I'm just saying if we could, you know, if we only meet on the 9th for the hearing and the vote, and then we disbar, you know, disband, and then we meet again, I would just prefer to.
No, I, I actually, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I would ask that, you know, um, I think preliminarily, like Eric and I should look at the, sort of the work plan for the year, make sure that that makes sense. And then maybe we just bring it back to the committee as we get a little bit closer to see.
Always easier to cancel a meeting.
Always, yes.
Agree, agree.
Always better to have it on the agenda.
Looking at that week, saying, man, we have to meet every week of February.
Three weeks in a row.
You do get a vacation in February though, then.
It just becomes back to back to back.
Right. No, it's back, three, and we know, we've done that before. That's actually pretty brutal, the weekend, doing three weeks in a row. Okay. I'm going to make myself a coherent note. Okay. Okay. All right. I think we're on the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a few brief items for this week. First and foremost, I want to thank both of our communities for their support at our recent town meeting for all three articles that were on the warrant. I think, um, you know, that's a, a big push for us to be able to now begin these processes. It's exciting. You know, we've already reached out to the state to say they passed, you know? So, um, again, another milestone in the process as we move forward in the building project. And I think the opportunity for the stabilization fund will give us the ability to begin to go from a zero budget and not being able to move forward with the fields, athletic improvement projects, that we'll, we'll be able to build towards that as well. So I want to really say thank you to the communities. It was an important vote. And it, it helps us to guide our, our new next directions with our, with our facilities and our, our outside grounds. The Dibbles eight literacy screeners, they've just about finished all those K to five over the past few weeks. And tomorrow, there'll be some work done and also in the data teams in the next couple of weeks to, to start to begin to organize and put that data into sensible shape for each of the data teams at the schools to review and, and, um, build their interventions for, for kids, um, for the, for this, for this become, the fall screening. Something new this year, um, the, we're going to, we're going to try to make the Dibbles information available to the parents. It's a bit nerve wracking because when you, you know, it's like when you first got your MCAS scores, like what does this mean? You know, so even worse, there are now six graphs or something, I think five or six graph. But we want to be able to share that information. We're, we're collecting all kinds of information on our kids that I think is important to be able to say to parents, here's what we're talking about when we talk about this particular part, portion of the score or where your child might be having difficulty. So when you're having that conversation saying, your child needs interventions in this area, here's why. Here's what we're seeing. And then they can also, you know, have that conversation with the teacher as well. Okay, what's happening with my child in the classroom? What's happening with my child outside of the classroom with our, with our intervention models? Miles River Middle School, as you heard Dr. Best say earlier, they've just completed for the first time and in school-wide eye-ready math screener with their, with their students. They actually will dig into some of that data tomorrow, some of their teachers. That's part of the, the work that we'll be doing tomorrow. Really trying to figure out now where you take that. So this is baseline data for them. They've never had school-wide. Everybody, I think they had 99% of their kids actually complete the assessment. So that's a, that's a big deal for them. You probably noticed the mathematics theme through all of the presentations. We are really trying to, um, focus on that pre-K to 12. And then, um, if you checked your email, you got a strategic plan survey from me. And that is the next step in the strategic planning process. The survey is done by the Teaching and Learning Associate Group that is, uh, supporting us. They will gather that data over the next week or so. Uh, it'll be open from, uh, yesterday and through the 12th. And I will aggravate people and continue to send it out a number of times until we can get the data. The first run, even last night, I, I didn't have it queued up till, I think I put it out around 7:30. And by morning, we had like 170 replies from various, various groups. It's also important to note, if you have people, know people in the community that don't have children, you can send it to them as well. We really want to get the wider community as well. So we'll work with the towns to see if we can take advantage of any tools they may have to say, you know, let's get as many people involved in this as possible. So that'll be unique information that we'll use along with our, our regular data, in-house data that, that's being collected now when we have, begin to have our meetings. Also, Hamilton Oneham Boards of Health, uh, we are working hand in hand with them. I shouldn't say we, it's not me. Our nurses, once again, are going above and beyond. Uh, they'll be offering flu vaccination clinics on Thursdays through October. Although preregistrations are preferred, uh, walk-ins are accepted while, while the supplies of vaccinations last. So we have October 13th, uh, four to seven at the Hamilton COA. October 20th, three to 6:30 at the Miles River Middle School Cafeteria. October 27th, from 3:30 to 6:00 at the Bucker School Cafeteria. And, uh, there'll be, there'll be vax, there'll be vaccines available, be quadrivalent flu vaccines for all ages, including high dose for seniors. Um, you do not need an ID or health insurance to get a vaccine. But please, it is helpful if you wear a short sleeve shirt. So. And everyone from three plus, three and up can receive a flu vaccine. So the latest, the latest round of work that our nurses are working on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for the superintendent? All right. Moving right along. Committee reports, uh, capital finance, looks like it is me, right?
It's you.
It's me. Um, I don't think we have anything, right? Nope. Uh, policy?
Policies meeting again on October 19th. We have a couple of things we had held from the D section. And then we're going to plow right through into the F and the K section. Uh, you, you may not know that at the end of last year, we also finished the J section. So our goal is to bring forth the D, F, K, and J sections to the committee for full adoption by the end of the year. It's ambitious, but we're trying to finish this policy review. So October 19th via Zoom. Always a fun time.
Excellent. Um, negotiations? I don't think we have anything. Okay. We are flying right along. I am not sure that I have much really to report in my chairs report. I really want to echo, um, Mr. Tracy's, um, comments about the, um, two town meetings and the appreciation of the, um, citizens to come and spend, you know, significant amounts of time, um, at town meeting. Um, and, you know, to, um, be thoughtful in making those decisions regarding, um, you know, the three, the three warrant articles that were related to schools. I'm grateful for the time that, effort that everyone put into that. Um, and I'm not sure that I have much else in my chairs report. Did you have a question?
Any update on the Hamilton Master Plan?
So the Hamilton Master Plan is in sort of a pause at this moment.
Wondering, yeah.
So we, um, I can't remember whether I reported that last time or not. I don't remember. But I, um, we, um, got to a point sort of after working through, um, with the consultant, existing conditions. And, um, we sort of got to a point where we were, um, we sort of took a step back. And the master planning, uh, spent a little bit of time outlining, outlining the rest of the future scope. Um, and at this point, we're going to step back from the original consultant. And, um, the, I'm not exactly sure of the procedure, but basically the, um, select board is going to do a little bit of work and, um, potentially looking into the, finding a different consultant for the rest of the scope. So we don't currently have anything planned right at the moment.
They're going to go out to bid? It was originally put out to bid, I think, in both towns. Are they going to?
I know, well, I don't think it was, you mean as, I think they're two separate.
Yeah, no, they are two separate ones. Each town put out a request for a proposal.
Right. And it's actually, I'm, like, I don't sure exactly what, where we are in that process right now. So, yeah, I'm not, I genuinely don't know. I'm not trying to be.
No, no, no.
All right.
Curious.
Yeah. I, um, I mean, I, not that it really falls under chairs report, but I would be interested in, uh, you, the Oneham did have their master planning?
Yeah, they've, they've had some meetings. And there, there actually was an open house today, tonight, while we're having this.
All right.
So they, and we were just trying to get the schools taken out from under public buildings as a.
The schools, done what? I'm sorry.
I was trying to get the, the school, several people were trying to get the school taken out from just being buried inside public buildings as a separate category. But other than that, it, it seems to be, the process seems to be going fairly smoothly.
Great. All right. Uh, next up, uh, well, actually, is anyone, unless anyone has any questions for me? Okay. Um, topics for future meetings? Okay. Don't worry, I'll come up with plenty of topics. All right. At this moment, I would, uh, unless anyone has anything else, I would entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn at 8:44 PM.
Bless you.
Bless you. Was that a, was that a, was that a second? Second by David Polito. All those in favor? All right. And the motion passes. We are adjourned.